This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members Superintendent Kent Pecal, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, will you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Mottlin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Neeson.
Here.
Director Whitehorn.
Here.
Vice Chair Whitman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/simply. There are no comments to the Board this evening. Our next item is information and outreach, Board Member updates. Does any Board Member have updates from their committee since the last meeting or any other items to share? Director Marvin.
A number of us and a number of members of the leadership for the school district were involved with the back-to-school event at the MLK Junior Park last Saturday. It was amazing, the number of kids and families who showed up. It was just a celebration where kids could get backpacks and shoes and learn about the school district. Director Whitehorn was very involved in organizing that, and the turnout was enormous. It was such a good event, and thank you for all the work that you've done, because the entire community came together. So many organizations came together specifically to support our school kids.
And I have to give a compliment to our attendance matters team, who distributed for each school an individual sticker that had the attendance line phone number and a QR code that links to the district website and, I believe, the school mascot. So we were passing those out to parents, and I know that they'll be passing that out additionally to as many parents as possible to get ready for the school year. And yeah, it was great. It was great to see a lot of those faces. And thank you, Steph, Director Whitehorn, for all of your work. Anything else? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda, items 5.1 through 514. Would any member like, Board Member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Our next item is our focus topic, 2024-2025 FastBridge Data Analysis and Literacy Plan Update. Superintendent Pecal.
The... Well, you guys can all come up. Madam Chair, the state of Minnesota has a requirement that school districts need to develop a literacy plan that actually predates the REED Act, but it has been increased in importance over the course of the last several years, as we and other school districts have been working to meet that state requirement. The plan is not one that requires Board approval, but it does need to be on the website, and especially because this Board has had such a strong priority based on literacy, the Chair and Vice Chair and I agreed that it's a good idea, once again this year, to dedicate a focus topic to that subject. The team that we are going to hear from now, who you know well, is going to be focusing on the highlights of the plan, but is going to emphasize one source of data in the plan. And that's really in the interest of brevity and focus. The plan includes performance on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. It includes performance on the ACT exam. But we're going to focus tonight on the FastBridge Literacy Plan. We've had time to analyze the data from the FastBridge administrations that took place last year. We do not yet have final MCA data or ACT data from the state, so it really would be talking about year-old data if we were to talk about that. And so, we're looking at the FastBridge data. It's important, as I know this Board is aware, to remember that that data is intended for screening purposes. It's not a summative assessment of how kids are doing tied, for instance, to the Minnesota State Standards. And as the REED Act has really transformed the discussion around literacy in Minnesota, and as school districts have been required to adopt a screening tool like the FastBridge instrument we're going to hear about tonight, I have detected in more than a few conversations, including with fellow superintendents, people describing the FastBridge data in the same breath as data from the MCAs or the ACT or another assessment. And it's important to know, and it may come up in the discussion, that that is, it's really apples and oranges, that FastBridge is intended to help us intervene with kids who are struggling, knowing kids are doing well. It's not that summative measure that is tied to a particular set of standards. That said, it's very valuable, actionable data, and then you're going to hear about a new measure that we're going to be integrating at the secondary level tonight. So with that, you all know Mona Perkins, our Chief Academic Officer, Heather Willman, Director of Secondary Education, Heather Kretter, Director of Elementary Education, and Dr. Peter Ruck, our Director of Research and Evidence. And with that, I will thank the team for the work they did on this great plan and turn it over to them.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. This is one of my favorite topics, so I'm super excited to be here to talk with all of you. We are going to start with just going over our literacy goal, that this is the goal that we put into our literacy plan. And the REED Act, the goal in the REED Act is for kids to be grade-level proficient, and so the goal has to be around MCAs, not around FastBridge. So we decided this year to have our two goals be a 1.5-point improvement on the percentage of kids that are at grade level on the MCAs, and then a 1 percentage point improvement on the ACT reading assessment. We chose those because the, I'm going to let Peter explain that why we chose that over the 3.5%.
The 3.5% harkens back to the grid from the original strategic plan a few years back, and that's the minimum level approximately that any one grade level would have to achieve for it to be a statistically significant change. My bad. However, that's not any movement that's that large. I mean, even movements that are smaller than that are still a pretty significant gain, especially when you talk about how many students are involved behind it. You know, when you're thinking about a 1.5 percentage point gain across the entire system for MCA, for example, that's only about 125 kids or so. It's like 18 kids at each grade level. And that's when it starts to become a digestible, manageable, and planful number for a lot of folks that don't live in percentages every day. It's also designed to allow schools to have a little bit more flexibility in their school improvement plans, because every school is going to be at a little bit different spot when it comes to, you know, their robustness with this work. And so, some schools may have a goal that exceeds that amount potentially.
Thanks, Peter.
So what do our assessments tell us? As Dr. Pecal alluded to, we are at risk as a state of putting just as much emphasis on a screener like FastBridge as we do a summative, a achievement test like the MCA. And they serve extremely different purposes, and we shouldn't use one for a variety just like we shouldn't use the other. The MCA is designed to give a temperature check on how our students are doing relative to the state-assigned standards at each grade level. It's very useful for system and school health. It is not appropriate for teacher evaluation. It's not appropriate, believe it or not, even for individual student progress, even though the state produces those reports. The test was never designed for that purpose. However, it is our best instrument for determining whether our students possess the skills relative to the state's standards, and it makes us comparable to every other district in the state. I am one of the few people who absolutely loves the MCA, but I love the MCA only insofar as what it's good for, and it's good for a small set of things, not some of the other issues it gets drawn into. FastBridge is a deficit screener for kids that may be missing skills or kids that need to brush up on some skills that are still developing. FastBridge is not an achievement test. You can't pass FastBridge. There's no way to let, you're not doing well on FastBridge. I had a parent ask me once about whether they should incentivize their kid to do well on FastBridge, and I said no, because that's not actually what the test is for. It won't tell you useful information if a student is, for example, perhaps should receive advanced learning services. What it will tell you is, based on the assessment, who should we look at deeper in my class that might have some missing skills or some skills that need developing? And then where do I go from there? And that's the purpose of a universal screener. We also use it for progress monitoring, so if a child is placed into an intervention, we use FastBridge assessments or others as a progress monitor to determine their growth on the intervention and whether the intervention is working. With change in the REED Act, I was calling it 3.0, but I don't even know if that's actually accurate anymore, so I just gave up. REED Basics is coming to a school near you for grades 4 through 12. The state has mandated the addition of REED Basics as a state-approved dyslexia screener. However, it is also a test that provides information very similar to FastBridge, and depending on the subtest, my experts in instruction tell me some of them are quite a bit more actionable and better than FastBridge. REED Basics is administered as part of a two-step screening process for those students. Students who screen with FastBridge and are shown at some risk or high risk will receive REED Basics after that. Students that are at low risk or very low risk will not. That gets rolled out in January of this school year.
Okay, so when we give a universal screener, this is what we hope that our data, how our data turns out. We hope that about 80% of our kids end up being kind of in the green, indicating that our Tier 1 core instruction is really solid and giving them everything, all the supports that they need. We would anticipate that no more than 15% of the kids would need a Tier 2 intervention, and 5% to 8% needing a Tier 3 intensive support. This is the ideal state. That's not where we are. This would tell us that our core is really solid and our supports are what we want them to be. So we are continuing to work towards having our triangle look like this with our actual data. All right, Peter, you're up.
Oh, I had written down Mona on that one. So this is the distribution of our risk profile based upon our FastBridge data and how the screening results came out for students in A-reading grades 2 through 12. And as you can see, the triangle has not been adjusted proportionally for size, but the number inside of it has. And that would be where our students currently fall based on that last screening window with A-reading grades 2 through 12. So with FastBridge, the students, as I mentioned earlier, are placed into a risk category based upon their skills. So it's an overall sort of piece of information attached to that student's FastBridge data that says they're at high risk, some risk, low risk, or very low risk, depending on the assessment. So what this slide is showing you is the proportion of students that went from some risk and high risk to low risk at selected schools on those assessments. So for example, seven percentage points of Churchill Hoover students on A-reading moved from some in high risk to low risk over the course of last academic year. The risk profile for that student changed for the positive. And as you can see on each of these rows, it's pretty substantial at some sites, and it's a positive trend that we want to continue. If you're looking at grade levels across the entire school district, the two that had sizable improvements in their risk profiles were first and second grade, which is a good sign, especially with our intensive work with curriculum and the REED Act. So just because a kid doesn't go from some risk to low risk or anything like that, doesn't mean the kid didn't grow a lot over the course of the year. You can stay in a low-risk category or the some-risk category, but still have quite a bit of growth in your skills, quite a bit of growth in your development. It just might not have been enough to switch a category name within FastBridge. FastBridge classifies growth by how much you're making. So when we say aggressive growth, that's FastBridge's definition for that kid is growing faster than we would expect based upon the data. In other words, if they are missing a skill or maybe need to develop another one a little bit better, they are making growth fast enough that they would, quote-unquote, catch up to where we would hope they would be by the end of the year. So that's what aggressive growth is showing, and as you can see, there's quite a bit of aggressive growth across our schools and our couple of different assessments.
And this, this chart shows, we wanted to look at, are we closing any gaps by subgroups? And so, we looked at the growth that our Black students are making at different schools and compared it to the growth that our white kids are making. And what we saw at a lot of these schools is that they're making two or more times more growth throughout the year from fall to spring. Now, that doesn't indicate where their, like, their ending score is, so their ending score could potentially still be lower. However, it does indicate that their trend line is steeper, there's the slope of that line is steeper, so we're closing the gaps, and that's what we want to see. We want to see that gap continue to close. So you can see in each of these charts, it shows the difference between the average growth of the white kids versus the Black kids at those schools.
Now, we're going to move into the literacy plan that I'm sure you've had a look at. It's pretty lengthy. On our first slide, we're talking about the areas that we're going to talk about in this presentation, so definitely through the lens of MTSS that you've heard as we've looked at the pyramid with our data. We're going to dive into those screening tools a bit more, database decision-making. We'll review our core curriculum once again and talk about the professional development in the area of literacy. So through that lens of MTSS, we're going to talk about Tier 1 first. And of course, Tier 1 means this is the instruction, the curriculum and instruction for all students. Every student has the opportunity for this instruction. In our literacy plan, we highlighted the curriculum that our students participate in, so we have the structured literacy curriculum that's K through 5. We are in Year 2 of our Witten Wisdom Knowledge Building Curriculum, that is all K through 5. And then, we also have Year 2 of our Functional Phonics Curriculum that we've rolled out in grades 3 through 5. And I should add, we also are in about Year 5 of our Really Great Reading Curriculum that our K through 2 students have. Another part that was highlighted in our plan was about how we're making sure that we are implementing in the way that we want to be, and we're making progress with students. And so, we have tools that we're rolling out that are really observation guides that we're using, first of all, to identify what the instruction should look like and what are the practices within it, and then how feedback can be given as well through principals coming in or PLCs looking at it together. Skip goals within the sites are focused on literacy as well. Many of them are digging into the new curriculum and studying the assessments that are a part of it to see how students are doing and how their core instruction can adjust based on the needs there. And then, we have developed our ELA Power Standards that basically we dug in with a group of teachers into the state standards and pulled out the areas that we really want to make sure that are highly monitored by our teachers and in our PLCs, and so that's been a part of the work and will continue to be a part of the work. And then, of course, classroom teachers are continuing to scaffold for students in the classrooms, which has been a deep, deep work with new curriculum, trying to figure out the new curriculum and how to scaffold through the various needs in their classroom for that Tier 1 instruction.
All right. At the secondary level, we spent time really studying the standards last year, and then the teachers developed a skills-based scope and sequence for every grade level. This year, we'll really be focused on implementation of that scope and sequence and then an analysis of student work. And then, our teachers also worked really hard to develop single-point rubrics, and Kathy asked a great question, like, how would you explain a single-point rubric? It's really identifying the target, and then the teacher has that right in front of them, so they know they're right at that academic standard level. And then, we give the student feedback on where they need to grow and where they need to improve. So like a traditional rubric, you might have like three or four levels, and you're trying to think about, well, what did they not have? But on a single-point rubric, you're really focused on what's that, that level of the grade-level expectation, and then how do we give feedback for where they're either meeting or exceeding, and then where they're needing to grow? So we actually looked at developing those rubrics for every single one of our Power Standards, and that goes all the way from grade 6 through 11. The other piece we wanted to call out with Tier 1 is co-teaching. We've really leaned into thinking more about how we do that co-teaching effectively. We know that you can't just put two teachers together and say, go forth and co-teach. We need to make sure that they have planning time and they have professional development. And then, translinguaging is a big piece of that Tier 1 support as well, and then our REED Act training. So all of those pieces really fit into that Tier 1.
All right, and then moving to Tier 2, and this is the strategic support. Students who are performing below grade level, it is additional scaffolds and support for students that we provide. And one of the ways we do that identification is just like what Peter had explained through FastBridge. We do the initial screener, and then students that show some high risk, we have an additional diagnostic piece that we give to the students and identify which interventions would be effective for them. We do progress monitoring within FastBridge then to study how the interventions are going so that we can adjust and intensify the interventions as needed for each student. I want to call out that every student that's receiving Tier 2 also is getting the core curriculum as well. So we target the support for them, and this includes classroom teacher scaffolds, so within the classroom, there may be some small group instruction on top of the core instruction that students receive. And it could include support from a reading specialist as well when we talk about Tier 2 support. We use various types of interventions. We've had much collaboration on building some maps that teachers can access, and we're going to be rolling out some of those. I think, Heather, you're going to share that in your part, with lots of different resources that teachers can dig into based on the needs that are coming out of those diagnostics.
And I would say, at the secondary level, this is definitely an area for growth, because we really want Tier 1, Tier 2 to be happening with the classroom teacher. But we know that our classroom teachers often have 150 students on their case load, and so they're thinking about delivering that Tier 1, and then we have to be thinking, well, how can we use the data that we have about the students to think about small group? It might be targeted. It might be Thursdays is a day when I can do a little bit more differentiated support, but I think we have more work to do in that area. The resource maps have been really helpful, and we had a great collaboration, probably 40 or so folks came together to develop them. But now, we really need to work on how do we make sure that they're in the hands of the teachers and that they have time to think about what that would look like. So just wanted you to know that that's an area where we know we need to do some growth. And Jill Dunn and Justine Trubald have been amazing champions of that work.
And then, we get to the Tier 3 portion, which is the intensive support, so students that are falling further behind than just one year get some additional levels of support. And so, it's the highly individualized instruction, which means there's going to be an intensity, an increase of the intensity of the intervention. Sometimes, students are on individualized education plans and get support from their special education teachers and engage with the curriculum there, which is spire and sounds sensible. And on top of that, they are still getting the core instruction and Tier 2 support from classroom teachers. Frequent progress monitoring continues to happen, and adjustments to those interventions occur at this level as well.
And then, at middle school, all of our middle schools are able to provide individualized reading support now for students through the work of a success coach or an interventionist. So we do have that in place at all of our comprehensive middle schools. And then, at the high schools, we're launching something called a Literacy Lab, and so that's actually a course where students can get more individualized support at the high school level. And then, we'll be spending some time in community with those folks that are delivering that to make sure they have the right resources and that they also can collaborate around that. So that's something new. And then, in special education, our students who have a reading goal on their IEP will be getting specialized instruction through either Language Live or Mega Words. And so, they've just been getting training on that, and that will be new curriculum for those students who do have a reading goal on their IEP. And then, as Heather said, this is in addition to Tier 1 and Tier 2. So I think one of the mistakes we've made in the past is that our students who had Tier 3 support, sometimes we're missing Tier 1, and we know that we can't get students to grade level if they don't have access to grade-level content. So this is, both Tier 2 and Tier 3 are in addition to being in that Tier 1 solid instruction.
And then, our professional development, I think you've heard about this before, and our professional development planning, but we continue to have our instructional coaching, collaboration, and cohorts. We bring the coaches through early childhood all the way to 12th grade together, and we study the curriculum and instruction that is happening in the classrooms and talk about evidence-based practices and how they can support and coach teachers. At the elementary level, we're going to be having three literacy PD sessions this year that are focused on literacy, and so it will be about the standards, those Power Standards that I've talked about, really getting to know the assessments within our new curriculums and how to respond based on the data in those Tier 1 assessments. We're going to be diving into that MCA 4 that is coming out and studying how it, the shifts in that MCA, and then working on those common formative assessments as well. We're also going to have a winter PD that's going to be occurring that will be focused on writing and Witten Wisdom and how we use that for assessment. It really gives us a lot of data and tells us a lot about kids and their literacy as we look at what their writing and spelling. We'll have ongoing data meetings that teachers will engage in. They've had excellent training with Justine and Jill, as Heather had talked about. And so, after the FastBridge screenings, they study the data, they determine who needs the diagnostics, and continue to plan for interventions. So that will be continued growth and study. We're also moving into using our Functional Phonics and Morphology Resource as an intervention, so we rolled it out as a core resource, and now we're going to dig into how we can use it to intervene with students who are showing greater needs. And then, let's see, EduClima, we're continuing to use that for project monitoring or progress monitoring, so there will be more training for teachers on that. And Heather has already mentioned the resource maps. We really need to work with teachers about how to navigate all of the resources, because there's really a wonderful bank of interventions that have been built, and so we'll be working with rolling that out to teachers. And then, there's great work going on within the buildings with the problem-solving teams as they study needs of individual students. And again, I've mentioned intensifying the interventions. They're going to be focusing on, you know, what might this student need? And it might be about, oh, I'll... And it might be about, oh, I'll change the dosage a bit. Maybe I need to have more of a one-on-one approach. Or maybe the alignment of the intervention isn't really hitting the targeted skill that we need to get to. All of those kinds of specific ways to look at the data is going to be a part of the professional learning in our problem-solving teams at the sites as well. So we'll continue to be honing in on those skills to get better at our interventions.
All right, then at the secondary level, they've been kind of waiting their turn for the REDACT training. And so now English Language Arts teachers will get REDACT training, and we will find out what the options are in October. So we think that it will probably be different than the training that the elementary folks were given and more focused on fluency vocabulary and comprehension. But we'll know more in October, and then we'll be registering and making plans for that just like we did with our elementary counterparts. Then our English Language Arts teachers will meet three times this year, and they'll be reviewing student work, as I talked about before, making adjustments to their scope and sequence, looking at those common assessments. And then we'll have those folks that are in the interventionist or success coach role coming together to work on how are they using the resource maps and progress monitoring. We'll have ongoing data meetings to plan for targeted Tier Two and Tier Three. As I said, we have some work to do around what does Tier Two really look like and how do we do that? And then our special education teachers will have additional training with that new curriculum. And then final point, and I'll make it quick. At the secondary level, we really think about literacy as both in the English classroom but also across the disciplines. And so we're really still focusing on that idea of disciplinary literacy and our students making sure that they have opportunity to read, write, speak, think, and ask great questions in all of their classes. And we know that we can't make the progress in literacy in just 15 minutes in an English Language Arts class. We need to make sure that we have that happening across the discipline.
And then finally, you can see our areas for growth. Heather has already mentioned a very big focus on our core instruction. And at the elementary level, we've done some work on the schedules and really, really emphasize that all kids need to be in the Core One instruction. So our teachers all have that guide, and it's called out on the suggested times for all of their subject areas. We know that if we pull students out away from that very important standards-based instruction, we're going to continue to grow the gap. So we cannot just be intervening with students. We need to give them the opportunity for all that is in the core curriculum. So that's a huge focus in elementary this year. And then, of course, we've talked about just continuing to develop our professional learning communities to do really strong data-driven practice in supporting partners. Ready for questions?
Director Marvin?
Thank you. This was really interesting and really important, and I appreciate that you focused at the beginning on the different purposes that MCA tests, ACTs, and FastBridge evaluations are for. Another thing I noticed, I'm wondering how long it's going to be before a second grader mentions that Read Basics is spelled wrong? R-E-D-C-A-S, right? No, you don't have to.
Everybody wants to be unique these days.
I know, it's just, it's really cute and confusing. You'd mentioned that in middle school, kids who need help, there will be a reading specialist and success coaches that they can work with, and that in ninth grade specifically, there'd be a literacy lab course. Would that be in place of another class or in addition to, or how does that fit in? And mainly for ninth graders?
Yeah, so it's incoming ninth graders, and they will have that in place of a study hall. So they won't miss another course, they won't have to, you know, have one less elective or anything like that. It will be in place of their study hall. And we have two English teachers that are teaching it, and then we have one success coach at John Marshall that are in that role. So we're excited about the additional focus because we've tried some things and we've had some small pilots and seen some success. And so now we have that happening at all three of the high schools.
Thank you.
And then Karen had asked a question about, what about ALC? So our ALC has really leaned into their partnership with the Reading Center. And so they have done a lot of work with their partners there, and they do individualized tutoring, and they've seen some really impressive gains, and I think a lot of it has to do with that strong partnership. So it looks a little bit different at the ALC, it's a little more individualized. But they also have, provide that reading support.
And a follow-up to that, is that tracked and monitored along with the comprehensive high schools? Or is it completely separate? How do you integrate?
No, they look at the data when they have their data meetings, and they're really kind of, you know, right alongside of, they also have an academic interventionist. So often, students might work with the Reading Center folks, but then they might also get additional support or additional practice with someone on the ALC staff. So that has been something that, I think last year was probably the first year that they really spent more time and had more students able to use that support. And they felt like it was really beneficial, and so they will continue that this year.
The next time you report data, could you include data from ALC as well?
Will you say that again, sorry?
Can you report data from ALC as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be helpful. I mean, thinking about growth of all of our students, I think we want to include them in that population as well.
And I think we do, they may be called out on here because they did have some aggressive growth. I also have the MCA in my head, but because I know that there were some strong gains, so.
If you look at the slide, forgive me, there aren't slide numbers, but the improvement in risk profile, ALC High School was listed as moving quite a bit of students out of summer high-risk into low-risk.
And that actually raises the question for me then too, that that particular slide, it has a lot of elementary. Are all of the schools included in what you were capturing here?
Yeah, these were just the highlights with the largest gains. But I analyzed every school, yep.
Director Barlow?
Just one, possibly two questions. The target goals and actual goals for FastBridge, there were differences, obviously. I was curious, in terms of literacy, were there... I noticed there weren't any percentages or references to where we want our students to land. Am I overlooking something or what? Or am I not communicating what I'm looking for? Sure, under FastBridge, we're saying where we want X amount of our students to land and what services we would, or where we'd like to see them performing. And so in terms of the literacy, I was curious, are FastBridge target goals the same as our literacy target goals?
So when we do, when we give the screener, the goals within the screener, how we, the number of kids that are identified as needing support, the goals are a little bit different because you anticipate kids are gonna, there's going to be kids that need support. And this big push with the REDACT and all the science of reading across the country, it's all around kids that have characteristics of dyslexia. And the research shows it's about one in five kids that can have, that end up having dyslexia. We don't, it's a medical diagnosis, we don't diagnose that. But there's also ways to teach kids so that they can overcome their reading struggles. So it's not grade level proficiency. So when we're looking at FastBridge, we're looking at their risk. So the slide that shows that has the 63% in low risk and very low risk, those are the categories that are reported out in FastBridge. Those would be the kids that were just, they're good, they're getting their needs met and don't show that they have any need for intervention.
And so the goal would be for that 63% to be 80%.
To become 80.
Right, right.
Yeah. We always want, I mean, we want all kids to read at grade level, like, that's ultimately our goal. But when we're looking at screening, that triangle is kind of an indicator of like, if your system is really good.
Yeah, I think if I could, Director Barlow, it's really a student question. As we began, the literacy plan is focused actually as our primary indicators, the MCAs and the ACT. And so those have the 1.5 percentage point and the 1 percentage point target. The way to think of FastBridge, I think, is an early warning indicator of the MCAs and to a lesser extent, the ACT, lesser extent just because we haven't done, nor do I, am I aware, any Minnesota district has done the correlational studies about how a FastBridge score ties ACT, but that has been done with the MCAs. So it's predictive. And so if you're making progress on growth on your FastBridge, the logic and some evidence suggests we'll see improvement over time on that MCA target. And so you want to keep moving, as Mona said, your kids out of those risk profiles, and that ultimately, you want to see that reflected in that, those two summative indicators. In this new skip process that you have improved, the term for that will be the performance measures are what you've approved as the North Star. And then there will be a set of performance indicators like FastBridge that we will use as predictive of those larger outcomes. Another example, as we talked about in a recent board meeting, is kids who don't earn a credit in a ninth grade course. That is predictive of a high school graduation rate. And so the North Star is the high school graduation rate, but we'll be monitoring course failure in ninth grade as an early warning sign of high school graduation. Not all of our measures are going to have such good early warning indicators, but I think most of them. Enrollment in post-secondary education will have completion of the financial aid form in high school as an early warning sign, because for a lot of our kids, they need that financial support to go on to college. So we'll be tracking FAFSA completion as a performance indicator of enrolling in higher ed. So we're headed for a system in which the pieces mostly fit together, but it is confusing as we're still constructing it at this time.
Director Cook?
Thank you. So I am intensely invested in this work. I have never been under any illusion that any of this would be easy, that it would be simply a matter of, you know, join the board and 2023, January, pass Policy 621 in August, and there, we're done, right? That's not how I ever expected any of this to work. But I really feel strongly that we have a long way to go here, and we should be clear about that amongst ourselves and to our community. Along those lines, would it be possible to share anything about how we performed on the year-over-year goal from the last year's annual literacy plan, where we were aiming for a 3.5% reduction in FastBridge identified not-on-track students? Or do we know even roughly where we landed on that year-over-year goal?
It was essentially flat, roughly flat, if you combine all grade levels, all schools.
That's what I had expected. And I think, you know, just in, to be perfectly candid, I think the goal that we have identified for a year-over-year goal of a 1% increase in ACT scores, or, sorry, 1.5% on the MCA, 1% on the ACT. I appreciate, Dr. Ruck, that that is a level of improvement that would be measurable, and therefore, we could make some conclusions about whether our interventions were efficacious. But I think that would be roughly the same as flat. It would be progress, and we would be happy about it. But right now, our MCA score is, say, 49.7% proficient. We're just, we're not even remotely close to where any of us wants to be. And I don't say this because I don't recognize all the great work that's been done. I know this is incredibly hard, and I recognize lots of things in this plan that are thoughtful and they're forward-looking. We're accounting for the fact that incoming teachers don't have a lot of the skills that our current teachers are getting professional development in, which is crazy. But I like that it's in the plan because that's reality. I just... I feel like as this board, as this community is looking ahead to a new strategic plan, as we're thinking about resource allocations, we really need to think about what the next level of this type of work is. I thought, Ms. Willman, your reference to the individualized tutoring that's been made available at the ALC is really useful information for us to be thinking about seriously. We haven't been and won't be in a position where we have an abundance of resources that we're looking for ways to spend. But this is so important, and it isn't just about the MCA scores. It isn't just about the impact on our economy, it's about the confidence of these kids. By second grade, if they're not reading proficiently, many of these kids have concluded for themselves that they're not going to be strong students. And we're working uphill from then on for every single one of them. So I just... My question is, is there some next level? Are there tools that we have not seriously discussed or considered? And maybe even at this moment, if we are pretty confident they're not realistic or they're not practical, what are the things that would get us to 80% proficiency? Just so that we can start thinking about them.
I mean, I think some of the things that I think about are system pieces. And when we look at the schools that made more progress, we see a high, intense focus on data. We see really strong PLCs that are looking at data. We see small group, and we see a very engaged instructional leader that is expecting those pieces. So I do think that those are some of the things that we can point to when we say, well, why are we seeing growth here and not everywhere?
I agree. The systems are going to be critical, and we've been putting the systems in place. So, for example, this coming year, the schedules have changed, and there will be a common MTSS time. That's huge, that wasn't happening. That'll make an impact for how we group kids, how the teachers are able to intervene in a more comprehensive way because one teacher isn't having to have six different lessons because you can't get to them all in a 30-minute intervention time. But if we're sharing those six lessons between three of us, then you're only doing two. So that's one piece. The other piece is, in addition to the learning that the teachers get, they need additional coaching and practice. And that's where, like, the research shows you need like about 50 hours for it to really stick. That's why we're continuing to work with the coaches that they're getting in and supporting the teachers. When we started looking at the data, like, these are new practices that started this year, and Jill and Justine were right alongside the teachers, so they're practicing right alongside them so that it becomes, gets into their muscle memory, and this is just how we do business. And we have to keep looking at alignment. Earlier today, we were talking, Heather and I were talking about kindergarten and where certain things are assessed and where they're taught in the scope of the curriculum. And we might have to make some adjustments if we're not seeing the growth in kindergarten the way we want to. First grade didn't dip. I spent a few years, my last couple of years, racking my brain over, why are my first grade scores dipping? There was something goofy going on, I'm not seeing that here, that's fantastic. But I'm not seeing the growth in kindergarten that I'd like to see. So we've got to look at, what are some curricular adjustments that need to be made? You're right, our kids can't wait. We, this is, it's urgent. And so we're, like, yes, the feedback and all of that is fabulous, and you're right. Like, we need to keep working on making the adjustments as quickly and as solidly as possible so that the kids can make the growth that they deserve.
And I would just say, having been at the elementary schools, we needed structured literacy tools that supported our teachers in instruction. It is so urgent, and we're in Year Two of our knowledge-building curriculum. And I have great confidence in the teachers, even heard some of them in this room while we were doing science training today, saying, "Year Two." Now they're more confident, and we're going to go deeper. Now they're more competent, and we're going to go deeper with it, which is part of that standards work. Now we're going to be able to dig into the assessments and really, really focus on that core. So that's, that was a missing piece. We had teachers that were pulling with the best interests of students, pulling things, and we needed to get to that evidence-based practice. So it is urgent, and I just, we're in year two of that part of our curriculum. And also, the morphology resource that our third through fifth grade teachers are very excited about, it will have an impact. I just know it, but we're in, we've just had one year of implementation. So I feel the urgency for sure, and I'm impatient to see the results. But now I feel very confident that our teachers have tools, and we also have the phonics curriculum that's structured and follows a progression of skills that we want, instead of what we had before, which was picking and choosing. So kids are getting that, and we're going to continue to grow that skill in our teachers. But year two of implementation is going to look different, because our teachers had to learn the curriculum. So I think the impact will continue to grow. And I think there is that implementation, I think it's maybe up to three years before you do feel that with some new curriculum. So I feel the urgency as well, and I'm, I'm very hopeful and confident in, in the curriculums that we are rolling out, and excited to see what we do in year two.
From my end of the table, the, the, there's quite a bit of research at this point that says formative assessment is the key. A lot of formative assessment and making changes on those formative assessments as soon as you get them. So the, the, the impact of constant formative assessment and pivoting, research-wise, would suggest that's a pretty high-leverage practice. As my colleagues have, have pointed out, we've put infrastructure and tools in place to help facilitate that in a way that it has not existed in the past, and we're continuing to build upon those items, as, as you guys have mentioned already this evening. The research also would show that a lot of these types of fundamental systems change initiatives within schools take three to five years, and a system change takes five to eight. And so I would anticipate that some of these gains are on the horizon for us still at this point.
Director Whiton?
So I just got a, a couple of questions here, switching gears just a little bit. So in the, in the presentation, you guys went from percentages, and I don't speak numbers, so please follow me here, to points back to percentages. So what, what are the points? What are, is that, is that a difference in the percentage? Like, why, why did we, why did we stop talking in the percentages and move to the, to the points? I mean, how, how do we, how do I calculate that by number of students? Like, what is seven points?
Percentage points.
So?
If they were at 30%, and they went up seven points, they'd now be at 37%.
Yep, that's right.
So it'd be nice to know where we were starting from, right? Because it's just, it's, it's kind of a, it's a number that's there, but, I mean, an increase of seven percentage points from 10, I mean, it's an increase, but it makes a difference if, as you said, you can have an increase and still be in a space. I think it would've been nice to know if that growth is, you know, if we are still in that, that lower category, right, but we're seeing the gains there, it would be nice to know where some of those kids were starting from. And that is as well with the demographic information regarding the children of color and compared it to their white students. It would've been nice to know where that starting point was, you know, in this data.
So that one's not percentage, sorry. That was the, so when a kid takes the assessment in the fall, and they show growth, it's a certain number of actual points, growth, by the, by the spring. And so that was just average points. Like, how many points on average did a white student grow? How many points on average did a black student grow?
Oh, so we got two different points?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm glad I asked, though. I would assume all the points were the same kind of points.
Yeah.
But it still would've been nice to know that the starting, you know, kind of where we were starting at to where we have grown to. And then to Director Marvin, she did mention the instructional time with the tier one, tier two, tier three. So I guess my question is kind of along the lines of what she said, and I think you said study, study halls. Some students have study halls, I would assume a lot of them do, but I would assume as some kids have further gaps, how, how does that look for their instructional time, right? Because if we are, as you said, giving them tier one and tier two and tier three, it doesn't seem to me that we're all going to fit this in without them missing any instructional time, especially with us prioritizing literacy. It doesn't seem, to Director Cook's point, something that can be rushed through or should be rushed through. So then my, and I love the, I love the idea, and I know we haven't worked it through all the way, but then my thought is, how, how are we going to avoid students missing instructional time if they do need these higher-tiered support systems, right?
Great question. From the elementary level, because we have to acknowledge that students do need their other services as well, especially if they're in an individualized educational plan. And so we know that there are situations that they may have to have 10 minutes out of that core time, but it's a primary focus for the core math and core literacy blocks that they get students in there to the best of their ability. There are some outliers. We also have blocked the tier two, it's like a tier two, tier three intervention time, and that is something that the schools have done to allow for. This is the time where students are going to get some reading specialist time, or they might go for their tier three work with a special education teacher. So we've tried to block that time too, to allow for it within the schedule, but there still are some students that are going to need a little bit additional dips at other times. So we've then said, okay, where can we take them out of? And we have kind of suggestions for that.
And at the secondary level, there are a couple of ways that we've thought about it. This literacy lab is starting with ninth grade. And so potentially, there might be students who get that support in ninth grade and still need it in 10th grade. And so then we need to be thinking about, how can we still get them the credits they need to be on track for graduation? And what does that support look like? Sometimes it's having an hour with a success coach or an academic interventionist, and so that might be a part of what their, their school schedule looks like. But we want to make sure that they're not getting the reading support and then getting behind on credits. So I think that's one of the things we need to think about as we roll it out with high school students.
And the whole, the, the goal is that tier two is happening in their classroom, so they're not being, they're not missing instruction, because it's happening right in there, so they, the teacher can take part of the, the time to say, okay, these kids, this is where the formative instruction assessments come in. So based on what I'm seeing, these kids need some extra support, we're going to pull them and give them that support right within the classroom at the secondary.
And I guess my hope would be is that we are, we start to do well at this work, so, you know, we, they don't need as much intervention, right? That we're able to do this on a more preventative scale. So by second and third grade, they are on, you know, on task, but we don't want to, to Director Cook's point, it's urgent that, you know, we even have kids graduating, you know, that are up to par, so we can't forget about them. But as we grow, I would hope that we can get to a point where we can be more preventative.
Yeah, like, and the higher grades, we're definitely intervening, and I'm like, it's, we're on the back end of it. And on the, the younger grades, we want to make sure that our systems are super, super solid to prevent all of that. You're right, absolutely.
Director McClocken?
Dr. Ruck, you mentioned earlier about the research supporting the FastBridge being successful in interventions and helping students. Is that universal K through 12, or is that very based on elementary, secondary?
FastBridge is a stronger assessment for literacy grades K six. That's what it was originally designed for, so it has the most robust evidence behind it. Grades seven through 12, it's still a good assessment, but I wouldn't say it's as tightly put together. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
It, it does. I mean, it just, is it just that it hasn't been studied, or that it isn't as effective? Or do we not know?
Both. This work at the secondary level is kind of novel everywhere. And so they're not the only assessment provider in that space, there are other options, but all of them originally were designed, for the most part, for elementary first.
And then, Ms. Willman, I did have a follow-up for you. You had mentioned something that I never heard anyone talk about before, but you talked about the strong PLCs, and PLCs are professional learning communities, right? What's strong versus not as strong? How do you characterize that?
Yeah. So I would say what you would see in a strong PLC is common assessment, looking at student data, and then thinking about, as a teacher team, what might we change because of the, the data that we just saw? So if we're both teaching sixth grade English, we're looking at this common assessment, we're noticing that our students aren't able to provide text evidence. And so then together, we might decide, okay, these are some students who had it, what might we have them do? What should we do strategically for the students who didn't get it? And then we're going to come back and look at, what, what did we notice? And did that work? I think sometimes, because we have new folks coming in, we are planning together, but we're not always using that common formative assessment data. And then our teachers will tell you, it's really hard to do a really high-quality data dive in 20 minutes. So how do we help provide more time to be able to really dig deep and then figure out what will we do based on this data?
If I'm hearing what you're saying, then, that that's, it's something that the teachers build their skills, but their analysis is different year to year, because the kids are different and their assessment data is different.
And their teammates might be different. You know, I'm thinking about, we have 134 new teachers that we just onboarded last week. So if you're coming in and both of you are brand new, your PLC might be functioning at a different level than it might be if you have a veteran teacher who's been there for 11 or 12 years. So I think we need, we just need that, that purposeful time to be able to do that well. And I think that that can be hard sometimes to find that.
That's super helpful, thank you.
So I wanted to ask a question about the dyslexia numbers, because you mentioned one in five, but when we look at the numbers that are in the literacy plan, it looks like our numbers are much higher. Is that normal? Is that a characteristic of, of our population? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, I think that's really probably more of a statement of just kind of where we're at. I, I think that the numbers are pretty common across the state. So it's not where we want to be, and I think if we continue to make curricular adjustments, I think, I think we can definitely improve those, those numbers, and really want to hit them when they're younger, just to solidify. So, so no, I don't anticipate the numbers staying there. I'm not surprised that the, the last couple of schools I've, you know, the districts I've worked in, that, that's been the case. But that's because there's, there's room to grow.
And is part of it that we really haven't had a focus or a screening for that?
That could be part of it. I mean, I, I think there's just been a huge shift in the knowledge base around the, the science of reading, and we just weren't teaching reading the way we were supposed to, but the research had indicated for many, many years. And so then you're playing catch-up. So, so, yeah, I mean, that's what I, that's what I would attribute it to.
It's a bit of a definitional issue as well. If you take it at its broadest level, the screening demonstrating characteristics of dyslexia, because we don't diagnose it, is essentially any reading difficulty. And so if you take it at its absolute loosest definition, it's anyone that's at summer high risk. And that's where the state gets the idea that ReadBasics goes to those students.
And I would assume then that the results of each individual student's FastBridge would allow you to dig a little deeper into what those skills are and what those areas, specifically where they need intervention?
Yes, because the, it's not, so the A reading is the broad reading assessment, and that one's not going to tell you what the specific skills are, because dyslexia is a, is issues with like the actual decoding of, of the words. So the A reading can indicate, will tell you, can trigger for the older kids if, will tell you if the kids aren't doing well, but then that tells you, you would want to give, if we, if we didn't already, part of some, for some grades, we automatically do it, but curriculum-based measure, which is just a fluency assessment, and then we look at their accuracy and then their, their fluency, their rate. And the accuracy will tell us, if they're not accurate, we know that they can't decode, and then that's the problem. So then we give a different assessment to dig deeper to see what exactly is it? Are you still stuck on CVC words, or are you on multi-syllabic words? So then it's, the, the instruction is super streamlined and really skill-specific versus you're just saying, oh, this kid has a decoding issue, and I don't know where to start. So then you're working on really skill-specific things, and you should see over a couple of weeks, you should see the kids kind of move, move out of needing that, that skill, and then they go on to the next skill. So yes, FastBridge is amazing for that. Like, you don't get any of that from the MCA.
Right. And I know that this literacy plan goes to the Minnesota Department of Education, and I also know that the Read Act put a number of requirements on districts to complete in the past year, years. But there's no report card, summary report cards sort of on our work in doing the literacy plan, although I can look to a lot of the factors that you all have talked to us about and how you've implemented it. I look at the, the numbers in the literacy plan about how many of our elementary teachers have gone through the required training. And it looks impressive to me that, it looks like we're, we're covering the people that we need to cover. What would be our own self-grade, I guess, on how well we're keeping up with the requirements of what we've been required to do with the Read Act so far?
We've met all the requirements. I think for me, the more important thing is the impact it's going to have on the kids. So that would be the bigger indicator that I, I'd be looking at. But as far as requirements goal, we've met them all. You want to talk about the, the training?
I think we're, sure.
I don't see what you have on there.
Oh, sorry. You can't see my screen?
I think we covered it.
Just about how many teachers got trained already?
Oh, yeah, I don't have the total number in my head, but we're in phase two, so that means most of our K through five teachers are completing training. So we just had people today on their last live training, so we've gotten most, most of our elementary teachers have trained. Our fourth and fifth grade teachers could have joined phase two, but we had them join phase one. So many, many of them have taken the core Ola training, and then will move into the phase two, which I think will greatly be secondary as well. And all of our special education teachers were in the phase one for secondary as well, right, Heather? So, yes.
And, and I think we maybe shared about this previously, but ESP training is now part of the Read Act, and so our, all of our ESPs who support reading instruction are getting trained, their first installment this week, actually. And so we have trainers, yeah, we have trainers that are helping us out with that. So that will also be really impactful, because many of them are spending a lot of time with our students who have needs, and they didn't have the, the quality training. So we think, and we have, I think, a really strong, sustainable plan for that, where we have trainers that are connected to a cohort of teachers, and they'll be able to continue to train when we get new ESPs during the middle of the year, because we know there's, you know, a lot of movement in that group as well, so.
And I, I also think, you know, this is a lot of complicated information, but I think the message that I would want to share is, you know, the previous goal was reading by grade three, and the Read Act changed that fundamentally by reading at grade level. So to me, the work that's been done on K-12 students, and I think that's a complaint we had before, right? If they weren't reading by grade three, grade three, then what? And I think if you look at the, the plan for the next year and, and everything you've described at the elementary and secondary level, I, I hope that parents and students, you know, understand, we are looking at every single student, no matter their grade level, to make sure that they are getting identified for what skills they may be missing, and we're looking to put it integrated into our system, that they're getting the interventions that they need. So even if they're not reading at grade level by, you know, what used to be the target grade three, we are really focused at targeting each individual student's needs. And so, board members, any other questions? Superintendent?
Yeah, I'd like to just, first of all, when you have somebody who's a master at it in the room, you ought to acknowledge them. I want to say hi to, shout out to Leah Bethke, who's one of our best literacy instructors. I want to say hi to, shout out to Leah Bethke, who's one of our best literacy instructors. If you've been in Leah's classroom, she's a master at it with our, our younger, older kids, those ninth, 10th, 11th, you know, 12th grade students. This is a really critical discussion. I do, I think, since we've talked a lot about where we are, it's important to say, if you take the MCA as our primary system measure, we had declining outcomes every year from 2016. Last year, we began to shift that trajectory. And then, as Heather said, we adopted our first knowledge-based curriculum last year. We did not have a knowledge-based curriculum. We didn't have FastBridge being used at scale at all, much less being used well. We didn't do the professional development. The vast majority of our teachers, and this certainly would apply to myself if I was teaching English Language Arts, entered the profession before the science of reading, came out of the dustbin of history and changed our understanding of the importance of phonics. And sadly, a lot of our new teachers are not getting it in teacher prep. And so these pieces are being put together. The, the point I wanted to end on, and we will be, as we enter the new strategic plan and the new school improvement process, setting targets for improvement on the performance measures in a, in a way that is going to benefit from a lot of the hard lessons learned over the last three to four years. We've learned that FastBridge is not a good system-level measure. We invested in it because it's very actionable at the classroom level, but it's not a good system-level measure. And so that's to Director Barlow's question, they're actually two different tools. I hope and predict, school districts don't get better one level of school at a time synchronously, all elementary schools, all middle schools, all high schools. What happens is you have some leading-edge schools that begin to make that progress. And then when you begin to highlight what they're doing and it begins to have a synergy, that's where the whole bar starts to go. And so that's why last year, when we had that modest system-wide gain in MCAs, we highlighted those schools that began. What we want is those sustained three or more years of progress at the school level. So that's really where I'm looking for this to start to come, where we have those schools that are putting the pieces together with central office support. So it is, I, I share the board's urgency on this. I also will say, everything these folks have just walked us through is, to use the jargon-y but correct term, best practice. And so we are not off of the strategy that evidence suggests we should be on. But there's a pent-up frustration to want to see those kids reading a lot better. I will say of the data we saw tonight, the single most hopeful to me was those gains in the earliest grades. Because that's where we've invested the most. And that's where those kids are going to start to actually have learned to read so they can read to learn. And that's the thing, that's where we really, and of course, we've got to have that sustained as they get into third grade and fourth grade. But that's where, to me, was that when I saw the underlying data. I also want to thank board members for your feedback, which I've noted, on what you would find to be the most useful presentation of the data. We're still trying to get better at how we do this in a board meeting. And so I think this is super helpful for us to think about how we can do this and provide you and the community with this kind of information in the future. So thank you.
Can I just add one thing before we wrap up here? Somebody had asked about the parent communication. We did add, added a couple different parent communications. They look different because the assessments are different. So I just wanted you to get, kind of get a gauge of what we send home to kids. And they are translated into our five most commonly spoken languages at home. So every school has access to those and that's what goes home with the students. So they, what the families receive at home is based on if they speak one of the top five most commonly spoken languages. They get it in that.
And, and those are posted, Madam Chair, in the, with the agenda item. We added them today.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add a point about that? Can we develop a process so that when add things are added day of board meeting, that an email go out to tell us that? So that we know what?
Yes, I thought you were automatically getting one. So that's helpful information that you're not.
I don't think I got one for this.
Yeah, I know it simply does that for us, but yes.
Be glad to do that. Thank you.
That'd be helpful.
All right. Our next item is a monitoring item. This is the superintendent evaluation for 2024-2025 Leadership Component Report Part Two. Dr. Pakel's leadership goal for the 2024-2025 school year was school board members rate the superintendent as effective or highly effective on at least 75% of the elements of the goals and standards-based superintendent evaluation framework developed by the Minnesota School Board Association and the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, framework for purposes of this report. In a closed session with the superintendent on August 5th, the RPS school board met with Dr. Pakel to discuss the results of his self-assessment using the framework. Then in a closed session on August 12th, 2025, the RPS school board members conducted the second part of the annual evaluation of the superintendent. This involved reviewing the ratings board members had given Dr. Pakel using the same framework. The framework has eight standards: governance team, school district finances, communications and community relationships, school district operations, human resources, teaching and learning, student support and ethical and inclusive leadership. Each of these standards has five to seven elements. The tool asks evaluators to rank their superintendent on a scale of one to four: ineffective, developing, effective, and highly effective. There are 47 total elements in the framework. The school board's aggregate scores ranked Dr. Pakel effective or highly effective in 44 of the 47, or 93% of the elements, and between developing and effective in the other three, clearly exceeding the goal. Board members rankings on the survey concurred with the superintendent's in the following areas of concern: the need to put in place a robust, long-term technology plan, the need to continue improving staff recruitment, hiring, support, and retention practices, and the need to continue to strengthen the evaluation process across all fields. When Dr. Pakel was invited to join board members in the closed session, they agreed these three areas would be priorities as they worked toward continuous improvement in all areas of our school system. Board members noted that Dr. Pakel is a highly effective superintendent, not only on survey results, but in real-time service to our students and community. He continues to demonstrate a tireless commitment to providing top-quality education to all RPS learners. His meetings with countless community groups to share information about our school system were instrumental in passing the 2024 referendum. Meaningful gains during the past school year have been made in reading and math scores, as well as graduation and attendance rates. These are promising trends, but Dr. Pakel and the board were quick to agree these improvements are still not sufficient and that we must continue the focus on these areas. Board members thanked the superintendent for his support in some complicated decision-making over the past year and for the information and expertise he brought to the table. Finally, the board noted that Dr. Pakel operates from a sense of urgency about what needs to be accomplished and he is mindful of those who share leadership and moving towards those ends. He continues to build the kind of collaboration and trust that encourage the school district and the RPS community to work with and learn from each other. The board is grateful that Superintendent Pakel will serve our school district for the next three years. Thank you, board members. Our next item is our school board committee assignments for the 2025-2026 school year. We have some policies that identify which committees that board members serve on. And it is the role of the school board chair to appoint the members of each standing or ad hoc committee. And we also usually do this based on preferences of school board members, which we have collected. So the 2025-2026 committee assignments are as follows. For the 2025-2026 school year, where the terms expire at the end of the school year, the Community Engagement Committee, Don Barlow, Jean Marvin, and Stephanie Whitehorn; the Legislative Committee, Karen McLaughlin, Julie Workman, and Justin Cook; the Family Engagement Committee, Don Barlow and Stephanie Whitehorn; the Community Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee, Jean Marvin and Karen McLaughlin; Student School Board, Jean Marvin; Insurance Trust Committee, Justin Cook; Rochester Public School Foundation, Justin Cook; and the Community Budget Advisory Committee, Justin Cook and Karen McLaughlin. Justin Cook will serve on the Minnesota State High School League and that term expires July 31st, 2026. And there are terms that will expire in January of 2026, which, and those assignments will be made at the January meeting based on selection of board officers. And that is the meet and confer. And I will serve on that as board chair. The executive committee, which will be the board chair and the vice chair. And Julie Workman and myself and Jean Marvin will continue to serve on the policy committee. Thank you, board members, for getting your preferences. Our next item is an information item, Back to School 2025-2026. Superintendent Pakel.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. We're going to try something just a little different this year. We are on the cusp of a new school year. And so I am going to ask the members of the cabinet to step up to the podium and they are going to do a rapid-fire overview of some key efforts that are underway in their respective areas of responsibility. And so I, if I'm recalling correctly, the first is our chief of schools, Jackie Peterson. And we're going to move through these and then be pleased to take any questions or comments board members have after we've zipped through the, these areas. That sounds good.
Because this is rapid-fire, like you said, 15 minutes elapsed.
Rapid-fire.
The summer, the summer and 15 minutes elapsed.
Love it.
I'm pleased to say that we have all the right people in the right leadership roles in RPS. Our newest principal, principals, Isaac Matzik, who served as assistant principal at Kellogg, has been hired as principal. You've received these updates throughout the summer, but just want to highlight Isaac. As principal at Kellogg, he hired Brittany Ignatius, or we did, as assistant principal. That name may be familiar. Brittany worked in special ed programs here in Rochester Public Schools, including Phoenix Academy. She's also been an instructional coach for us here. She left us briefly for a role as assistant principal in Winona. And we wooed her back. We're thrilled to have her. If you get to meet her, she is full of energy. And we are super confident in the team at Kellogg. Tom Olson is a familiar face. I just wanted to highlight that Tom has gone from assistant principal at Ben Franklin Elementary and Franklin Montessori to the role of principal at Washington Elementary. And he is very excited. He spent a part of his time this summer at the, at the Core Knowledge Conference, just making sure that he understands the tenants of the Core Knowledge curriculum. And then I just highlighted here on the slide, the, the things that we, the activities that have taken place. Some of you participated in the training, the five essentials training. But here are some examples of what we've done this summer to get our principals and leaders in the district ready. The last bullet there, Principal Connect Series is a new, will be kicking off a new series, which will be every other Thursday. Principals and assistant principals can choose from a morning session or afternoon session so that we aren't emptying their buildings of administrators. And this will be in, in collaboration with Mona, Mona's department in providing just-in-time training for our leaders.
Great. So in the Office of Academics, when we wrote this up, it was 116 new teachers were hired, but I think that number has increased. We have, we've done a lot of professional development, put a lot of it together. So there's specialized support for special ed and ML teachers. Dr. Pakel came and gave a warm welcome to our new teachers. There were sessions that were built on, on building belonging, brain-based mindset, and then intro to culturally relevant teaching practices. We added some pieces around curriculum and technology training. And then there was also some specialized support for special area and related services teachers. And two new things that were big this year, one of them, a shout-out to REA. They sponsored, they purchased T-shirts for all of the new teachers. So that was great to see everybody wearing the same shirt. And then there was a session on how to access interpreters. I think that was really important to get, get that information in front of teachers right away.
All right. In the Office of Administration, we've had several restructurings of our leadership teams. First was in facilities. You met Mike Stock of a couple meetings ago. He's our director of facilities. And in student nutrition services, we have Dale Winham as our new director of SNS. I want to emphasize, because this is extremely important to me, that those were done without increasing the budget. We've made reductions in other areas within those budgets to make sure it was cost-neutral. We had a lot of success this year at summer feeding through some marketing and some communication. We saw an uptick in the number of students or families and kids eating at our summer feeding locations. This summer, we tackled a project in our central office. We've reorganized spaces. We've actually set for the first time clear criteria as to who gets a private office and who doesn't. It's based on a level of responsibility. And we also moved some departments around in this building. So if you were familiar with where things are, it's possible that it has moved in this building and at our facility services center over the summer. Our technology department took under a massive upgrade. Windows 11 is required to replace Windows 10 by October 14th. They've nearly completed all of those upgrades. New this year, we also just rolled out the new email addresses. So old email addresses will continue to work, but now we will go by first name, dot, last name. I think that's going to provide a real consistent look and probably will be easier for families and outside community members trying to get ahold of us. So we're really excited about that. Thank you to the superintendent for pushing us on doing that project. We put in 5,000 or more than 5,000 new student devices this summer. So there is frantic right to the finish line through this week to complete all that work. We upgraded some transportation routing software. So as a parent last week, for the first time ever, instead of waiting for a mail notification, I got an email with the kid's bus schedule. So that went out very smoothly last week. And we can still mail to those that did not have an email address on file. And then finally, we are wrapping up big projects at Kellogg and John Marshall. We did a little work at Mayo, getting ready for the next four summers of major upgrade at Mayo High School.
Good evening. As far as the Office of Human Resources, just a quick update during the summer, something that happened with the people strategy is we have hired what we're calling an ESP support specialist. This is a position that has been considered multiple times over several years, but we finally got approval to put it forward. So we did have that person started this month. When you look at our turnover rate of our ESPs, it's higher than our teachers, principals, et cetera. We're hoping that this is a person who's been doing that job all the way from early childhood to 21, that will be out there supporting them, answering their questions, kind of can say been there, done that, and give them good advice on what their struggles that they might be encountering. So her name is Faith. She just started, we, we talked her out of retirement. We're really, really lucky to have her. So she's just started this week. And she'll be getting connected with those new ESPs during orientation. Vacancies that we run into, these are a couple of weeks old, so it was a snapshot in time. These numbers have changed. At that time, we had 27.5 ESP openings, five maintenance, nine SNS, 7.7 teachers, and then 12.9 special ed-related, special ed teachers and related services. As we look at those numbers compared to a year ago when we ran this, we're in, we're in better shape on our teachers and special ed teachers and slightly more vacancies in ESPs, maintenance, and SNS. But again, this week alone, just with the end of the summer and school starting very soon, we just see a very high number of hires and, and people resigning at this point. Thank you.
A little taller than Carlos. Good evening, everyone. The big update for our department is the change in title itself. So some of you may have noticed that we're now referred to as the Office of Family Engagement and Youth Empowerment. I had to say it slow to get it correctly. It's, it's a result of a conversation that's been happening over months. Superintendent and I have been talking about it and this is where we landed. We wanted to bring some clarity to some of the people that we serve about what our office does. And we're here for our families and we're here for our students. We want to listen and learn so that we can enhance the experience of our families, but also the experience and the educational experience as well of our students. We've changed a couple of personnel. So you know that Amelia Cordell, our former coordinator of American Indian Education, has moved to South Dakota to be closer to her mother. And then also Tucker Queeton, our part-time liaison, or previous part-time liaison, is in the process of selling his home and moving to Hawaii to be a grandfather. I can't argue with those reasons, right? We have since replaced those two with Guthrie Capasala, who is our current coordinator, and Joe Robbins, who is filling the role of part-time liaison. Also, we have changed the role of Willie Tipton, moving some of his responsibilities out of human resources and into a role that we are hoping fills a gap, fills a need that's been there for a while. Willie will be working with some of our families who, I would say, maybe their student, the art, the way our system is currently set up hasn't been successful for their student. So how can we work with them to learn about their experience and maybe get that student in the setting that can better fit their needs?
I don't have to lift that up. I have to peek over the top.
Thank you. I'm batting cleanup tonight, so a few things on Community Ed and Partnerships, which you know is a varied umbrella. You can see them across the top there. We chose two things to focus on. One is our Back-to-School Communications, which actually starts before the school year ends with sending out the new Summer Digital Take Home Folder, which is an enhancement that came through our Communications Department with all the various resources parents might need to prep for school the following year and get through this summer. All of that comes out in May so that they have it when they're ready for summer to arrive and then provide supply lists and those kind of things for the fall. There's a lot of social media work going on, as you may have noticed, telling families all they need to know. Most of the school messaging is going through this fall, our Aptige platform, which is our website platform, and a program called Engage for newsletters. And this is a change for some sites that we're using other software and using the feedback from families. On fewer tools is better. We're trying to narrow that set of tools that families need to pay attention to. It also supports all of the language translation that you can use on our website through Google Translate, and so they're using a consistent platform for that. We've also got training for staff on these new platforms, as well as just having staff do their normal fall updates on their information. And then one area that's exciting is Volunteers in Education. We'll be back soon. It's never truly gone, but Josh Halverson is the new coordinator of Community Partnerships, who will be taking this on as a key initiative this year. He's already dug in and heard lots of feedback from our current volunteers, as well as staff in the buildings, and will be really working to stand up a system for recruitment and training and onboarding and marketing, as well as retention and recognition of those volunteers.
Wow, that was good. I was going to say, Board Members, any questions? But I think wow is the appropriate response. Thank you to our hard-working Cabinet. Our next agenda item is the Policy Committee Recommendations from our July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. These are the recommendations that the Policy Committee proposes to the Board. This is the second of two Prep-for-Action briefings. Before the policies, we'll be on the Consent Agenda for Approval on September ninth. And if you remember from our first briefing, we didn't quite have time to read you the summaries of the policies and the changes, so we are going to do that now. Director McLaughlin.
So I'll start. The following policies have no MSBA or other changes. Policy one oh one, the legal status of the school district remains the same. Policy one oh one point oh one, the name of the school district remains the same. Policy two oh two, School Board Officers, there are no changes. And there are also no changes from Policy two oh three, the operation of the School Board governing rules. Policy two oh three point zero one, School Board Procedures and Rules of Order also do not have any changes.
Policy two oh three oh two, Order of the Regular School Board Meeting, has no MSBA model policy changes, but the Policy Committee recommends to move the Item Consent Agenda to after information and outreach, which is the current practice. Policy two oh five has no MSBA model policy changes. This is regarding open and closed meetings. But Board Members should note that changes to Minnesota Statute thirteen D oh two, which are referenced in Section four point eight, meetings by interactive technology, will change the current School Board practices should a Board Member want to attend remotely. There are no MSBA model policy changes for Policy two oh six, Public Participation in School Board Meetings, Complaints About Persons at School Board Meetings, and Data Privacy Considerations. However, Procedure two oh six A, Time, Place, and Manner Restrictions, and Procedures for Public School Board Meetings and Comments to the Board, have changes in Section three C and three D, which reflect information on the comments to the Board form in the current use. Policy two eight, Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policies, have no model policy changes or recommendations from the Policy Committee. Policy two eleven is the Criminal or Civil Action Against the School District, School Board Member, Employer, Student, No Changes. Policy two twelve, and Procedure two twelve A, No MSBA or Other Recommended Changes. Policy two thirteen, which is the School Board Committees, Policy Committee Recommended Adding Procedure Part of This to Procedure two thirteen A, School Board Committees. Procedure two fourteen A, No MSBA Model Changes to This, which is Out-of-State Travel Guidelines for School Board Members. Policy Committee Recommends Additional Language to the Travel Guidelines for this Procedure. And then finally, Policy two fifty, Legal Counsel, No MSBA Model Policy or Other Changes.
Policy two fifty, there are no MSBA Model Policy. Oh, you just read that one.
I did. I did it so well.
You did. It was fast.
Thank you.
Policies three oh one, three oh two, three oh three, and three oh five clarify the roles of the District Administration to the School Board. It includes the role and responsibilities of the Superintendent, the selection of the Superintendent, their contracts, duties, and responsibilities. Policy three oh five is Policy Implementation, and Policy three oh six is the Administrator Code of Ethics. There are no MSBA Model Policy or Other Recommended Changes to these policies.
Policy four twenty-two is Policies Incorporated by Reference, and there are no MSBA Changes or Other Recommended Changes. And Policy five eighteen, DNR, DNI Orders, is an MSBA Policy. The Policy Committee is recommending that Policy five fifty, Student Medical Emergency, which was an RPS-only policy, be rescinded and have all of its relevant language pertinent to medical emergencies included in Policy five eighteen. The Policy Committee recommends that the title of this policy be changed to Policy five eighteen, Student Medical Emergency. Board Members, any questions? Comments? This is all about our work, so it's nice and clean. All right. So we will have this on the Consent Agenda at the September ninth meeting. Thank you. Our next item, eight point one, is a Prep-for-Action item, and we are scheduled to take action on this at the September ninth meeting as well. The Superintendent Goals for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Superintendent Fickell.
Thank you, Chair Nathan and Board Members. As Board Members are aware, this year my goals have two components. One is how I perform as a leader against the competencies that the Minnesota School Boards Association and the Minnesota Association of School Board Administrators have identified in a very lengthy framework. And Chair Nathan just read your evaluation of my work in the current year on that framework. In October, you will evaluate my performance on what we've called the Outcomes Component, which is tied to performance in literacy on the MCA exam. For this year, I am recommending a different set of goals, and the Chair and Vice Chair generally agreed that this is worth proposing to you. I'm not recommending that we continue with the MSBA, MSA, MASA framework, because frankly, I think we've used it for four years. It's been useful to look at all of the laundry list of competencies Minnesota expects superintendents to achieve, but I think, at least for me as Superintendent, it doesn't give me a lot of actionable feedback for improvement, and I'm not sure it gives the Board a very good framework to really say, Kent, this is where it's going really well and this is where it could be better. I think it's been a good place to start. So I would like to, you know, working with the Chair and Vice Chair, look at different resources that we could use for evaluating my work as a leader in future years, but we haven't settled on that yet. I know Director Whitehorn went to an organization that provides support for School Board Members, and they had a framework for Superintendent Evaluation I'd like to look at. It's behind a paywall, so we got to find a way to find out what's there. So I'm not proposing that we continue with the MSBA framework, but that we look for a framework that we could utilize in future years so that we have it in place. I'm also not recommending an outcome goal for next year because we are in transition to a new strategic plan on our new Skip two point O system, though I will recommend in subsequent years we return to having that measure around the student outcomes. And so what I am proposing is a set of six goals that are really critical work outcomes that I believe we need to achieve and that will very directly involve me as Superintendent. There are a couple of goals that you noted in my evaluation around our employee evaluation process and some of our People Strategy, supporting our staff, that I do see as critical for the year, but they're ones that will be more in Carl Bockens and Mona Perkins' neighborhood than mine directly. So I'm not listing those as goals for me personally, but I can assure you they will be a high priority for the year ahead. One of them, I am suggesting, that was in my evaluation, be a personal goal for me for the year. So Board Members can see, and I tried to come up with a simple statement for each of the six, if Board Members are generally supportive of these goals, when I bring this back to you at your next meeting for action, I would add a measure statement beneath each goal that is a distillation of how the Board might decide I achieved it or I didn't. But before I took my hand at that, I thought I would just propose the six goals. So the first is a new strategic plan, that we would develop a robust strategy for guiding the work of the school district, I believe through twenty thirty is the year that I think I'm going to recommend, but we'll see how our process plays out. Certainly a three-year plan at minimum. Our New School Improvement Process, fully building out that very different approach to improving outcomes in the performance measures that you have adopted, that that needs to be a process from the functioning of our skip teams to engaging parents to using data to putting in place interventions, that is completely ready to go for next school year, because as multiple Board Members have said tonight, there's an urgency about improving outcomes across our work, not just in literacy. As we talked about at a study session this week, we have some complex and important decisions to make around facilities that need to be made, not just in the financial interest of the school district, but in the educational mission of the school district. And so that's why I'm proposing that be an objective. You can see the specifics there are our Freidell Facility, the Educational Services Center, where our Phoenix Academy is located, Mighty Oaks, Skyline, the Edison Building, the P-Tech and C-Tech leases expiring at Rochester and Community Technical College, and then space for our Minsync Online. So that's what I'm recommending as the third goal. The fourth did come up in my evaluation, and I am suggesting that we make it a personal goal for me this year, that I'd be working with John Carlson and Mike Johnson and our technology team to address some of the gaps that we see in our infrastructure, our devices, our staff support, our software strategy. It's something that in today's world runs across our educational and operational work, and it's really time to develop that multi-pronged, long-term strategy. We had that in our sights when we proposed a technology referendum to our community that narrowly failed. And just candidly, Board Members, we have not gone back and taken up that work after that referendum didn't pass and we moved on to the next challenge, but I think it's time to move that forward in earnest. The balanced budget model last year was a major focus of the school leader's work at both the school and the central office levels, and some very good things happened in terms of the school staffing and allocation process. There are some things that need to be fixed. And then the work that really lies ahead is redesigning the way we budget the central office to really align with our strategy. And so the fifth goal I'm proposing is the refinement of the model. Notably, in that statement, it also says, "Secure RPS School Board Approval of Refinements in the Model and Present a Balanced Budget for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year that incorporates those refinements." The balanced budget language, as Board Members know, there is not a small thing. You've already directed me to prepare a budget that includes thirteen million dollars in reductions, and so that point number five combines cutting the budget with refining the budget and staffing model in one objective. And then finally, we will be presenting you next month with a draft of new mission, vision values, and brand identity, and we want to make sure that that is not just words on a wall somewhere, but that it's a living, breathing statement of who we are and who we want to be as a school district. And so the sixth goal would be leading an effort to really bring that mission, vision, values, and brand identity to life. So those, Madam Chair, are the goals I'm proposing. I'd be pleased to take feedback or questions and bring a revised version of it back to the Board at the next meeting, as I say, incorporating some measures that I think the Board could consider to decide at the end of the year whether I met these goals or not.
Board Members, any questions? Comments? Clarifications? Kudos. Director Cook.
Just a brief observation. Your time and attention and focus as Superintendent is extremely valuable and something that I think the Board should be really cognizant of how far we are stretching you. Six goals is a lot. These are all definitely important, and probably all of these will need to get done in the next year, whether they're tied to your personal goal or evaluation or not. So to the extent some of these things could be successful without your intense personal involvement, it's maybe worth considering if less might be more.
Okay. I appreciate that a lot. Thank you. I will look at this list through that lens.
Director McLaughlin.
When I first looked at this, I really just liked the idea that each of these items on this list are things that we've been working on already, and I think putting them here as your goals demonstrates the importance of those various areas.
If there's any other thoughts, Board Members, we have one more opportunity to address them before next week. Thank you. All right. The next item is an action item. This was one that we tabled at the August fifth meeting, which were our goals for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. If we're able to reach conclusions this evening, it would be good to move this to action and introduce a resolution so that we could put them in place. Attached to the agenda item were six goals and three standard operating procedures. And I just let Board Members know in the agenda item, there's a series of questions I'd like to walk through to evaluate them. And the first is, do any Board Members have any comments or modifications on the goals one through six that were identified, or any of the specific language describing the goals? Director McLaughlin.
I think I put this in our question-and-answer comments. I was just struck at goal number six that I think we want to be careful about communicating and engaging with the community about School Board Elections, meaning candidates. I think what we mean here more is the process.
Yes, and I would agree that if we added process to the end of goal six, that would not only allow us to talk about potential changes in the structure of a primary, but it would also allow us to include School Board Academy and other potential candidate information and election information opportunities. So thank you for that. Anything else on goals one through six, on the language? Hearing none, I'll move on to the next question, which is identifying responsible individuals or committees to develop the implementation plans. If we look at goals one, two, and five, I would propose that that be the responsibility of the Executive Committee in scheduling A, B, C, D items for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, in conjunction with the Superintendent's goals in those areas. Goal number three, we discussed this at the August twelfth study session, and there will be further implementation by scheduling updates in the A, B, C, D and the Superintendent's Strategic Plan Implementation Process that you're going to present to us September twenty-third.
Got a lot done on it today.
And goal number four, I propose that the Executive Committee identifies options and methods for feedback and develop a Board Agenda Item that we put on the A, B, C, D before the end. I would like to do it before the end of January of twenty twenty-five so that we address it early enough in people's consideration. And finally, goal number six would be the responsibility of the Community Engagement Committee, or if the Community Engagement Committee doesn't want to take that on, three Board Members on an ad hoc committee. Any observations on those assignments? Director Marvin.
The Community Engagement Committee, or at least parts of it, already have a draft of a plan that would address goal six.
Busy little bees.
That person hasn't shared yet with the rest of the committee, but that person will soon share it.
Sounds like we have a good start.
Excellent.
All right. We, as, now that we have assignments or who's responsible for them, as we're developing, for example, the executive committee will take some feedback from board members to consider for how we're going to implement the goals. So you won't be surprised at the end of the process. We'll keep you informed. And then the last piece is that I have three standard operating procedures that I introduced as opposed to a goal. Some of them grow out of what we did last year with our goals. Our participation in monthly skip visits through the school visits is the first. And the second is board members attending school, district, and community events throughout the year, using information on events provided through district communications and the assistance of the superintendent or their designee. To me, that's not a goal anymore. It should just be part of what we do. And that's why I thought we'd introduce the standard operating procedure concept, which we all said we wanted to keep doing anyway. So, all right. So if there's no other changes, I'll read a resolution and see if we can move this to action. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the board goals for the 2025-26 year. Goal one, direct and empower the superintendent to continue implementation of school continuous improvement plans for the 2026-27 school year that include evidence-based goals and strategy for improving outcomes on the performance measures approved by the school board. Goal two, approve a new mission, vision, and values for Rochester Public Schools in fall 2025. Goal three, guide development of a new strategic plan that utilizes stakeholder feedback, evidence, and research to enable Rochester Public Schools to make transformative progress for achieving the new mission, vision, and values. Goal four, evaluate options for the 2026 School Board primary election and decide whether or not to take board action before April 2026. Goal five, approve a budget for fiscal year '27 that supports the long-term budget strategy approved by the board on June 17th, 2025, and subsequent updates. And goal six, develop and implement a plan that supports community communication and engagement related to board decisions concerning the school continuous improvement plans, strategic plan, budget, and school board elections process. Move approval. I have a motion and a second. There's a bit of motion and a second. Any final discussion? Director Marvin? Oh, workman, sorry. Hi.
Yeah, I would just like to comment that I think the standard, standard operating procedure mentioned is really important, so that not only are, do we remember, which we would, but so that the community is aware that these goals are not one and done, but they are things that we are continuing to do. So as we do in so many of our decisions and ongoing processes, that it's not, okay, this is, this year it's done, it's finished, don't ever have to look at that again. So thank you, Chair Nathan, for adding that.
Welcome. Thanks. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the resolution has been approved. Thank you, board members. Item 10, other business. We have our updated ABCD available in this agenda item for reference for our future school board meetings. Our upcoming agenda items for September 9th, our monitoring item is MCA data review and initiatives update, prep for action, approval of proposed school district property tax payable 2026, resolutions for the MSBA delegate assembly, board meeting schedule 2026, policy committee recommendations from our August meeting, and our action item will be approval of the superintendent goals for 2025-2026. For the regular meeting, September 23rd, we will have a focus topic, which is the 2026-2030 strategic plan update, a monitoring item of elementary science curriculum implementation update, a prep for action on the, drum roll please, mission, vision, values, and brand identity, prep for action policy committee recommendations from August, an action item on the approval of the proposed school district property tax levy payable in 2026, the action on the resolutions for the MSBA delegate assembly, and a closed session on the superintendent evaluation for 2024-25, the outcomes component. Are there any agenda items board members would like to add for consideration? Hearing none. Our upcoming board meeting dates all start at 5:30, September 9th, 23rd, and 7th are all regular meetings, and our next study session is on October 14th. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D05 subdivision 3B, which allows the board to go into closed session pursuant to labor negotiation strategy. The closed session will be convened immediately following passage of the motion in the Edison Building main floor conference room. Pursuant to the law I have cited, will someone make a motion to glow, to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to go into closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The board goes into closed session at 7:24 PM.
The board returned to the regular meeting at 7:53 PM. Clerk Marvin, will you please read the list of people present in the closed session?
Yes, I will. Kathy Nathan, Kent Pecal, Justin Cook, Carl Bach, Stephanie Whitehorn, Don Barlow, Karen McLaughlin, Julie Rickman, John Carlson and Jeanne Marvin.
Thank you. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:53 PM.